Let's see, we'll call the meeting to order, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Rathode?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Sieratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Here. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for a closed session on August 8th, 2018 at Parkway Central Middle School, following the regular meeting for the purposes of considering, one, legal actions, causes, or action of litigation involving the district and/or any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Number two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Number three, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, including records of individual test or examination scores, 610.021.6. And number four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13.
So moved.
Second.
Nikki. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Rathode?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Sieratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Now, may I ask you all to please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we will be honoring Parkway for the United Healthcare Well Deserved Award. So Patty Bedborough, would you join us?
Absolutely. President Todd, Vice President Sorentino, Board of Education, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Allison Baumgart with United Healthcare. She is here to present to the Board of Education and to the hard work of Leah Gonzalez and our wellness team, a well-deserved award from United Healthcare.
Thank you Patty. So tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing Parkway Schools for the second year in a row for receiving the well-deserved award from United Healthcare. The well-deserved award recognizes 10 employers nationwide each year for implementing an innovative and industry-leading workplace well-being program that improves the lives of the employees. Parkway Schools is one of three employers nationwide to receive the Golden Apple designation this year for winning the well-deserved award for the second time. Our Golden Apple recipients have demonstrated a long-term commitment to improving employee health. Parkway Schools has excelled in creating an innovative wellness program, as demonstrated by the numerous programs offered to help improve the employees' health and help them to avoid chronic health conditions. In addition to your robust Wellness Champion Program, Parkway has always demonstrated leadership support for the health and well-being in the workplace by verbally supporting the program and by providing resources, both personnel and financial, to ensure that the program continues. So on behalf of United Healthcare, I congratulate you on this achievement, and we look forward to working with you to further the success of your employee health and wellness program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) I just want to add a few things. I have with me Leah Gonzalez, which is our Parkway Wellness Coordinator. She is newly, as of July 1st, a Parkway employee. We've reaped her benefits from when she was a United Healthcare employee and worked on our behalf to coordinate everything with our wellness programs. And I don't think this award would be possible without her leadership and her guidance. And now with being a Parkway employee, we just think that we can even go further with that, especially with the near-site clinics opening and such, too. So Leah, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki, just want to walk and we'll shake hands over the counter.
Okay. I'll put this down. I'll put this back down. I'd like to thank you. (laughter)
Thank you. It's a pleasure having you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Glad to have you on.
Thank you.
It's good.
Congratulations. Thank you, Ma'am.
No.
Thank you again. Moving on, 6.0, Addendums, Corrections, and Modifications to the Agenda. 6.01, Addendums to Agenda Item 10.06, Approval of Personnel Items. 6.02, Addition of Contract to Agenda Item 10.31, Approval of Purchase of High School Photos. 6.03, Addition of Agenda Item 10.39, Approval of Corporate Partnership Wagner Portrait Group. 6.04, Addition of Agenda Item 10.40, Approval of Corporate Partnership Chesterfield Valley Dental. 6.05, Addition of Agenda Item 10.41, Approval of Corporate Partnership Philly Pretzel Factory. 6.06, Addition of Agenda Item 10.42, Acceptance of Gift Highcroft Bridge Playground Equipment. 7.0, Citizen Statements. We have none. We're just moving right along. 8.0, Approval of Agenda for this evening, August 8th, 2018. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for August 8th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. 9.0, Communications. 9.01, Calendar of Meetings. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 12th, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School, and anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 PM. 9.02, Board Liaison Reports. We'll start down there with Sudhir.
It's been a while, so I don't remember the last meeting, so I'll pass it on to Kevin.
It has been a while since the last meeting, and obviously, we've had a lot of meetings since that time, but one special thing I was able to do since the last meeting was, I don't know where Mike went, I thought I saw him earlier, but Mike invited me to do a tour of the Operations Department for the district, which was a very eye-opening experience for me. You know, when we think about districts, school districts, we think of, with good reason, students and teachers, but to get sort of a firsthand view of the nuts and bolts of the district and the things that keep this district moving so that teachers and students can do, you know, what they're here to do, was really fascinating to me, just, you know, just how the toilet paper gets to the schools in the district, and how the grass gets cut, all that stuff. It was very interesting to me, and it's a really well-run operation.
Great. I have been really busy at work, so it's been good for me that it's been summer for this, so looking forward to getting back into it, though.
Over the summer, the Special School District Governing Council convened a subcommittee, which I sit on, which is, the purpose of the subcommittee is to review the Special School District's Board of Education election process. We had some hiccups in the June meeting where the Special School District Board was being elected, so it was decided that we needed to begin a full review of this entire process on how the Board of Education is elected at the Special School District. So I sit on that subcommittee along with a couple of other Governing Council members and Dr. Bohannon. We'll be meeting again in August, on August 22nd, to make final some recommendations to the Governing Council on what our recommendations will be to improve this, to improve the The forms that the candidates actually fill out to apply to become a Board of Education member have not even been reviewed in over 10, 15 years, so it is something that we want to do on a regular basis now, even annually, reviewing this process to make sure that it runs smoothly, and we're getting the candidates that we want to sit on that very important board. The other item with the Special School District Governing Council is that the Public Review Committee has their report now out. It is available. There are about anywhere between eight to 12 recommendations that the Public Review Committee has formulated in a formal report. Our district has that report, and I'm sure it would be available to anybody who would like to look at that. On September 17th, the Governing Council is going to convene their next meeting, in which it will serve as an orientation for the entire process of how the Governing Council operates, and we would like to invite the alternates. Sudhir Rathode is my alternate on the Governing Council, so on September 17th, we would like to invite all of those individuals, and I believe the superintendents may be invited as well for all of our partner districts. So it will be a very important meeting, in that we haven't ever had a, we're trying to tighten up the orientation process for Governing Council members, so that when they do, this Governing Council only meets four times a year, so sometimes if there are some school districts that are not able to attend that Governing Council meeting, we may not see those individuals for maybe two or three times throughout the entire year, and then the alternates come, and we want to know more, who are these individuals, why are they on the Governing Council, and to really help to deliver a message of the importance of the Governing Council and what its really important role is for the Special School District. So there will be some changes to that orientation meeting taking place on September 17th.
I'll just quickly say, this summer, I had the chance to reach out to the senior administration team and just get to know more about what their roles are and their challenges and successes here in Parkway, and I'll say it's been eye-opening for me, I appreciate them giving the time to me to learn what's going on, and I'll say, as a parent in Parkway, getting, coming to candidate and get on the board, I'm learning more and more, and I'm more appreciative of what's happening here in the Parkway District.
I had the opportunity to attend the all-district administrators' meeting. Welcome back. And, you know, we see administrators oftentimes on an individual basis, maybe one or two or three at a time, but when you see them all together, it's just amazing. It was a nut-beat meeting, everyone was enthusiastic, everyone's ready to open the school year. Dr. Watson did a great job of providing the leadership and organization of the meeting. Dr. Marty gave a great talk on leadership, and I'm sure it was very well-received. But it's a great experience to come to the back-to-school meetings to see everyone in one place. That also happened at the transportation meeting, and that's amazing, too, because we see bus drivers here and there and everywhere, but to see them all together, it was really pretty special. Will did a great job of creating a nut-beat, exciting environment to open the school year. And on Friday, I will be visiting with the nurses. It's always a pleasure to visit with the nurses on their back-to-school as well.
Thank you, Sam. I, too, sometimes with Sam, sometimes on my own, have attended some of the back-to-school kickoff events. Today, we were, Dr. Marty and I were at the Nutrition Services meeting, and then the Coaches meeting, and a few others over the last couple of weeks. Earlier, well, I guess the end of July, Matt and Kevin and I participated in the Twith Law Seminar, the Twith Kinney Law Seminar, all about school law and changes in school law, along with a number of our administrators, and so that was very educational. I got to spend the evening, back in June, I think, at the Parkway Alumni Association Summer Party, and that was a nice event. Also, was fortunate enough to travel to Jeff City and watch the Missouri All-State Jazz Choir state performance, and out of the 16, no, I'm sorry, out of the 18 students that made All-State Jazz Choir, Parkway had seven of them. We had three from Parkway Central and three from West, or four from West, and they just did an amazing job, and it was a neat event. I want to just, a quick shout-out on the behalf of the Board, want to wish Michael Block some very good luck. He's a Parkway Central '94 graduate, kicks off the PGA Championship tomorrow, and of course, on behalf of the Board, we want to wish good luck and great vibes going forward for all of our students and staff as they get back to school next week.
Very good. Do I have anything to add? You guys did such a good job. I just want to compliment the Board, mentioned at the Twith Law Seminar, which is really a great learning experience, so it was great to see so many of the Parkway personnel, both Board and administrators there. The Board is really, as you can see, has, you know, even in the summertime, has a lot going on, but henceforth, I'm really excited. A number of the Board members are going to be out and about the first couple of days of school, and I really appreciate their willingness to do that, to get into our schools, as Jeff said, school kicks off next Wednesday, and I think what we're seeing, because, boy, these groups are pretty exciting when we get together, it's like chattering and excited, so I think we have the hugging, and just, they're just very excited. So I think everybody's ready to get back, and I think, I've watched some of our athletes gather, too, now, so I think it's time. We don't think so, but it's time to get back in a routine, including us, right? So thanks, Board of Education, I really appreciate all your efforts and work. Thank you.
Board Subcommittee Reports. Debbie gave us a good update on SSD, but nothing else to report tonight. Moving on to 10.0, Action Items. Consent Action Items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the August 8th, 2018 Board Materials?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I have an abstention, I will abstain from 10.25. The motion carries 7.0. Seven zero. Moving on, 11.0, Approval of Resolution to Reset the 2018 Tax Rate Levy. Patty Bedborough, please join us.
So I know I included information in the Board Letter and information in the Board Item as well, so this is an action in order to reset our voluntary rollback. It's an option for the Board. It's only an option in non-reassessment years, so this is an opportunity that we have. We do believe that we want to maintain the 6.2 million in reserve revenue that our rollback is, so this is an exercise just to essentially provide us some flexibility in our future planning.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the 2018 Bond Issue Project List as presented in Board Materials?
No.
Wrong one. Try again.
11.01.
I'm following my script.
I'm sorry.[1035.13][1035.13](laughter)
I didn't think that sounded right.
That was the last one.
Yeah.
It's on the board box here.
I've got board box.
Sorry.
That's all right. So strike that last sentence by me, and replace it with... Can I simply say, may I have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution to Reset the 2018 Tax Rate Levy?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now, we're not...
Put motion from the next one, too.
Motion from the next one.
The bond box.
Okay, so I have that one. 11.02, correct?
This isn't right, though.
This isn't right.
It's on the board box.
Well, as I search for this...
It's right here.
Patty's, yeah, Patty's going to talk first, so I'll get straightened out here, and then, in the meantime, Patty, can you give us a quick summary?
Absolutely. So our next item that we have for your consideration is the approval of ballot language for Proposition S that has been named by our Bond Campaign Committee. The Proposition S, of course, stands for the Safety and Security of our schools and for our students, because they're all of our work, our Project Parkway, all of our work is centered on our students and the work of our students. We have the language available. We have, as a superintendent's action team, reviewed the language. We've also had review by our Bond Council, which present here today is Jason Terry, with Gil Morin Bell, our Bond Council, so he has approved that language as well. Do you have any questions? One thing I'd like to add, if Proposition S is already taken up by the county when Nikki submits the paperwork, we do have a secondary option of Proposition P, which has been used in the past as well. It's a first-come, first-served, correct? And then, this will be placed on the November ballot, and it would require a 4/7ths or a 57% passage rate.
Just one question. I know the project list, we updated significantly in the spring in response to school safety concerns, as that was the thing we were hearing the most about, and I just noticed that that, in the list of, not limited to, that just doesn't really come up.
If we go down about the fourth row, Safety and Security, and Maintaining, so Improving School Safety and Security is in there, it's kind of buried in there.
That's, I think that's, yeah, I mean, not that I'm saying, like, to say the why, but we're confident people will understand that that does mean what everyone is asking for, so the double-vestal entries, the, all of that kind of stuff.
So that is part of the educational materials that we can utilize, and then, of course, the Bond Campaign Committee can give additional promotional material, so, but we, as a school district, can provide educational material on what is included in each sector of the project list.
Okay.
And the why behind it.
Any other questions? Okay. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the Resolution calling for Proposition S, a $110 million bond issue that is to be a no-tax rate increase to be placed on the November 6th, 2018 ballot, as is described in the August 8th, 2018 Board Materials?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
No. Aye.
I'm sorry. I'm going to roll call.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Rathode?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Sieratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Moving on, I believe, to 12.01. Kevin Beckner, your time is now.
I believe what we have now is Policy Review, and presented in your materials for your consideration is our policy related to field trips and student travel, in addition to the MSBA proposed language. We've worked with several Board members to ensure that Parkway is adopting language that's helpful and useful to us, so one of the additions we've made to that MSBA policy is to ensure that we have a handbook, both for overseas travel and domestic travel. The domestic travel policy, or I'm sorry, handbook is in development. The overseas travel handbook was also linked in all of your materials, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the proposed policy at this time.
I will just go ahead and thank you. We had talked over email about adding some language to the policy to better reflect the fact that students actually have to apply and be accepted to an overseas travel event, so I appreciate that that was added to make it more clear in the policy itself.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Additional Policy Review, and I have, I have Phil on my list, but I don't see Phil, so we'll have Amy Joyce come join us.
I'll be standing in for Mr. Ogaskey this evening. Thank you, President Todd. So yes, we have a policy review for GDDB and GEBD, both related to holidays. We have a contract with our CWA members, and there's language in there that talks about the employee taking, that they need to work prior to a holiday and after a holiday to receive holiday pay. If they're not at work, if they're sick, then they must provide for a doctor's note, so we are just trying to make the language consistent with other employee groups. So that's just the basic changes that we have.
Okay. You don't have any questions? We've talked about this already, so...
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Now, if I could have Kevin rejoin us, and we're going to talk about personalized learning, get an update.
Well, thank you very much for the chance to give a personalized learning update. Very excited to talk about personalized learning. As you know, we've discussed here with the Board, personalized learning is one of our key strategies in order to achieve Goal One of our strategic plan, so I'm happy to provide an update of where we are in that work and give you a preview of the work that's coming forward this year. We'll cover four points briefly tonight. One, we'll provide background, just for our new Board members, to ensure that we have understanding of what personalized learning is and where we are in that process. We'll present a tentative timeline for our model programs, which will make more sense once we discuss that here in a moment. We'll talk about the long-term work and what we need to work on in 1819 in order to achieve some of that long-term work around personalized learning, and then we will also discuss the specific action team, the work that that group is going to be involved in during the school year. So those will be the four things we cover briefly. So going into background, we know that this is Goal One, that we want our students to be able to engage positively in the ever-changing world. We also know that when we went to do this work, we talked to 1,100 different community members through the listening tour in the spring of 2016, which included parents, community members, teachers, students, and one of the questions we asked at that time, was we said, "Look forward to when the current kindergarteners are going to be in 12th grade." That year would be 2028, and we said, "So what should learning look like in 2028?" What we heard from our community were these things, things like customized, flexible, individualized, self-directed, experiential. So knowing that these are the things our community said we might want to really work towards achieving over the long term, over the course of many years, it was decided by my predecessor, Dr. Meredith, to call it together a personalized learning task force. So the task force met from April to October of 2017, and then presented this, their report in December of 2017, and began working in earnest after that. That group was made up of all kinds of different stakeholders, community partners, parents, representatives from higher education, teachers, and school and district leaders. That group came up with two key things. One, personalized learning can mean a lot of things, but what's it going to mean in Parkway? So they identified five different components of what we believe personalized will look like. I understand you can't read that, but you have all these materials as well, but things like, really based on competency, that they, students have really learned what we expect them to learn, not just sat in class for the requisite amount of time or achieved a certain grade, but that they really are learning what we expect for them to learn. Things like they can demonstrate their learning in multiple authentic ways, not just on the standardized test, but they have really meaningful things where they can demonstrate their learning, that they pursue and explore their interests and have different ways that they can do that. The second thing the task force produced was a twofold charge to us as a district. One, over the short term, which is the right-hand side, create some model programs to show how would personalized learning work in a Parkway context, with Parkway students and Parkway teachers and Parkway resources. What would it actually look like? And not just describe it, but actually show us. Create some model programs at each level. But then, over the long term, don't just have that be model programs, try to make sure that all of our students have personalized experiences in our schools. So those were the two big things the task force generated. Now, on those recommendations, a little visual always helps me to think about. On the left-hand side, we have our long-term works. If you think about our schools, think about it like, you're out in a field, you're trying to grow up this idea, provide the support that we need to make this happen. In a field that might mean irrigating and fertilizing and having the right kind of seed and really bringing the resources that that field needs in order for that to grow, but we also know that out in that field, there are some things outside of our control, things like climate, temperature, soil composition, other things, agriculture people can tell you more about this outside of our control than I can, but point being, there are some things that really we can't control in our school context. There are systems and structures that are in place that make it difficult. We know that there are some things outside of our control. So on the right-hand side, we think of our model programs as a greenhouse, where we can control for some of those factors, where we can set up the structure so that we really can create personalized learning environments for our students in a way that is sheltered from some of those outside conditions that might hinder the growth of personalized learning. So we use this visual just to think about, in the long term, we want to have sustainable systems in our schools where we really are personalized learning for kids, but in our model programs, we're going to really create those systems where we can control some of the conditions so that we can show how that can really work well. So that's all background. Now on to our update and the things we want to talk about for this year, so I want to zoom in on those model programs, and we've even sometimes... So I want to zoom in on those model programs, and we've, we've even sometimes start to refer to them as our greenhouse programs. How can we grow up personalized in a really controlled setting? I'm going to share with you some, a timeline. It's always scary when we do that, because then that means, oh, wow, we have to like really get to implementation. So the task force said, in two to three years, create some model programs. So our tentative timeline to create those model programs is the 2021 school year. We're on the verge of the eighteen nineteen school year, and it might seem like that's a little ways out, but as we start backing this up and we now start to think about what that means in action, that means that if we want to start talking to parents and students about the opportunity of being part of a personalized program, they have to be able to sign up for that, know about it, really, because registration for that starts in January of 2020. Well, if we need to provide information so that they can make an informed decision about that, that means that we have to have a really strong sense of what those model programs look like, how they're designed, what happens inside of them, where it is, all the logistics really have to be figured out by the end of September of 2019. Then if we start to think about that and say, "How do we get our teachers ready to be able to teach in a personalized learning model? How do we make sure that they have the development, the support, the resources, the training, all the things that they need to do that? We really want to give them a long runway to do that," and that actually means we want to start engaging them in that process during this coming hiring season, which means we're all the way to January one of 2019, and in order to be ready to do that, all the work starts now, and that's really where we are, is we're at the beginning of this work to figure out, how do we make personalized learning models a reality for students in Parkway and an option for them to attend someplace that truly is structured around being flexible enough, customized enough to meet the needs of every student so that they can achieve our mission and vision? So that's the update on the timeline for the model programs. But if we think about the long term and how we're going to really grow this up in a sustainable way in our schools, we know that there's work to be done there, too. So the focus for the 2018-19 school year is actually providing development for our school leaders and district leaders around what personalized learning looks like. As we began engaging in this work last year, what we heard from our principals is, "You're talking about personalizing, I haven't really heard of that. I don't really know what that is. Like, help me understand more about what other schools might be doing." Part of the work to do that is to create model programs to show them, here's what that looks like. But we also want to give them a strong foundation to understand if it means that learning needs to be more project-based and assessment needs to be more project-based, or the idea of competency-based rather than time-based. So we're going to really spend this year trying to develop our leaders, so we're in the process of, of developing a year-long plan for their learning around personalized. And then finally, we have our action team, which meets throughout the year, and action teams are part of how we establish work around our strategic plan. So we actually have three components to the personalized action team. The first one is the teacher team, because we need to have teachers meaningfully engaged in that process so that they can help us design the day-to-day of how it looks inside a model program. What happens? What are the resources we have? How do we structure it? Is there fluidity between age, what we, we consider grade levels? Well, grade levels are a part of the existing system. We really want to have students working at their level, so how would that look? Well, we need teachers to be engaged in that. So that's one of three components of the action team. The second one is having a team, I mentioned, we want to focus on leadership development this year, so we want to engage our leaders to become part of that process in developing that plan, and then actually engage our building leaders in carrying out some of that development. So that's what that team will be working on. And the last team will be focused on logistics of the model program. So questions like, where is it? What are the hours? How is it staffed? Like, all the, just nuts and bolts of how a program needs to run, that team's going to be tasked with making recommendations around that. So it is heavy lifting, and as I mentioned earlier, that all starts now, but that is where we are with personalized learning. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, though my suspicion at this point is I have more questions than answers for you, but happy to address them.
Not a question, but I just, I applaud the effort. It seems, it's, it's a very immense undertaking, and it, but also, I think, something I think is really important, so I just want to, I don't know, congratulate you on the, is the right word, this early in the process?
Too early, too early.
But I'll let you know that I think it's really a worthwhile thing that we're doing as a district, and so I commend you for taking this on.
Thank you.
In the district as well.
Kevin, I'll, I'll ask you a question. So I was fortunate enough to participate on the, the listening tour a couple of years ago, and those kindergartners that you spoke about are now entering second grade. So as we go through the next couple of years, as we develop this plan, will your action team have a way to go back and revisit those questions that we asked and see if there's, if anything changes with technology or the world or, or types of learning? How will we, how will we know if, that those answers are still worthwhile?
That's an excellent question, and I don't know that that's one we've really thoroughly addressed, is, is how do we do that on an ongoing basis? I think your question's well put, because we always need to be monitoring that kind of, those kinds of things and making sure that we're abreast of any changes. So I don't know that I have a direct answer to it, but I appreciate the question, because I think that's going to prompt some of our thinking around that as well, and I think that will also fold into the broader, the broader work we do, and Dr. Watson leads around Project Parkway, and how we develop our strategic plan and carry that out. And each year, we will revisit that action team and what the steps, the steps that are necessary for that team to engage in. So I think that's one place where we will see some flexibility, where we can continue to look at that, but I think that's a great question. We need to make sure that we're monitoring, just do those conditions change? Are, are these the things that our kids still need so that we're making sure we're responsive to that?
Okay, thanks.
I'll ask, so I had the privilege of sitting on the task force along with Dr. Cortino and Dr. Marty, and it was just really get a charge out of doing stuff like that. I mean, we just see what benefits to the students this will have, so very, very excited about the district's willingness and interest in pursuing this opportunity. Two questions that I have. The first one is, how will the participants in each of these teams be identified?
Yeah.
And who, who will they be, and how will you decide who's on those teams? And then the second question is, we had talked about rolling this out, either, the idea was, do we roll this out as over the entire district all at one time, or is there going to be a beta site that we're going to roll this out on as kind of doing it as an initial idea of, is this going to work and how, and, and doing that? So where, and where, what's the status of that decision?
Second question first. The model programs are really designed to be that, that sort of beta test or even alpha test. Like, here we are at the beginning, and we want to design something on a small scale to show that this can work. So we, while I don't want to lock us down into numbers, kind of what we're thinking right now is potentially a hundred students at each level in those model programs. Obviously, that's flexible and, and could also, just when we get into the logistics, I mean, we start a little bit smaller than that and kind of scale it up to get to that number, but we really do want to make sure that things work, and they work really well. When you're, and when you're undertaking a pretty substantial change like this, where you're really pushing on some basic structures of school, we don't want to scale that too fast. We want to make sure that we're doing it well, that we're doing it right. So that's a good question. We're really thinking small scale at first, and you can think of it as a beta test or an alpha test, but really making sure that we're, we're well researched, we're well thought out, we're well-designed when we get to that point, and then actually get students in classrooms with teachers and resources and say, here, after all the research and work we've done, we're ready to start implementing this, and then we will learn from that. And we should learn all the lessons about everything we know about change management, and you think about your, your phone does not work on the same operating system it did even a year ago. It's constantly evolving, and I imagine these model programs will be the same way. We will learn things. We'll learn things that work better than others. We'll have to adjust different components of those programs. So that's the second question first, is we're really thinking small-scale model programs to show this, this can work. Your first question was, how do we decide who's on these teams? Well, with a couple of those groups, the development team, the logistics team, those are going to be Parkway leaders, just like we established many of our district action teams, and we ask principals, we provide them through Dr. Watson's office, we give them, here's all the action teams, here's the descriptions, here's what we're going to be working on, and we ask for representation from each building so that we do get a broad spectrum of levels in schools. For the teacher team, we're actually in conversation around that, and that's a really important piece, because we want our teachers involved in that work. We also know that with any change, there are early adopters, there are people who follow closely after early adopters, there are people who come along once there's a majority and it's sort of safe, and then there's people who are more resistant. How do we identify those people who are willing to be early adopters? And how do we identify those people who are willing to try something different, to really think creatively for our students and, and how to meet their needs and how to do that in a different way? So we're in the process of figuring out how we do that. When it comes down to who actually wants to teach in a program like this, we'll have to follow an, an application process and follow all of our regular hiring procedures, just like we do for any position in the district, but that's, that's a little ways down the road. Where we are now is figuring out, so who's going to be part of this development? We do have a, a running start with that, because as you might remember, back in May, we had the design challenge here in Parkway, and we asked our principals, "Hey, can you please identify some teachers you think would be really good to start thinking about this?" And they did, and we had some teams that helped us start to launch this work and think about what we would need. So we already have that group who we can build off of, of teachers who've thought about this a little bit, had a couple of days to learn together and really work on that, so that's another place that we can potentially leverage to identify more of those staff.
Can I ask one more follow-up question?
Please.
That just triggered another thought, was, is this going to be something that we see as a vision of just enveloping the entire district, or are certain students going to apply for a personalized learning program, and it's going to be like, it sounds like a Mosaic's or like a gifted, then it's personalized, or are we really trying to see this as a district-wide effort?
I want to separate the model programs from what we want to do over the long term. In the model programs, yes, it will be, you apply, and, and we, obviously, we want that group to be representative of our entire district, but we, we need a process by which if, if there are three hundred elementary students who want to come, we have a hundred seats, we have to have a process to do that. That's part of why we needed a logistics team to work on that piece. Over the long term, we know that our charge from the task force is to ensure that all of our students have personalized learning experiences in Parkway. How that happens and how we get to that point, that's a little far on the horizon for me to tell you exactly how that's going to work at this point, and the mechanisms and the logistics of how that, that works. So I, I don't know the answer to your question at this time, but what we do know is we want to have that as something that we have for every student, is that they have personalized learning experiences in Parkway.
Okay, very good, thank you.
To what extent do we have this going on now in classrooms? I know teachers are eager beavers, and they learn about new ideas.
Yeah.
And they like to try things, so it seems to me that we must have some personalized learning experiences going on already.
Absolutely, we have, so if we think about our five components, and I showed you that wheel earlier, certain components, we have just amazing teachers who are doing fantastic things. So if we think about, for example, the idea of increase, making student voice and choice central to the learning process, which is one of those components, and we think about some of the things we have with internship programs, or we think about a program that we have at West High with virtual enterprise, or we think about, you know, our Spark programs, and we think about just even the teacher who's not in any of those programs, who differentiates for their kids and says, "You have all this choo-" Choice is a really important component, and to that degree, oh my gosh, we have lots of teachers doing amazing things. I was even talking with the, the department leaders at Central High today about this and really emphasizing that, "You guys are doing amazing stuff." One of the realities is they're doing that amazing stuff in a system that was not built for that, so how do we help them grow and expand those things? By removing some of the barriers, because we know so much about school is standardized. We know that, there's standardized testing, we have state standards, we know that every student gets a hundred and seventy-eight days, we know that they have forty-four minutes in a class in middle school, even if these things don't meet their needs. So our teachers are doing awesome stuff, and they're doing it within a context that wasn't built to do that, so how do we leverage that and build on that? As we look at some of the other components, we're not near as far along, so if we think about components like having multiple authentic ways for students to demonstrate their understanding, we have some pockets where that's happening, and some awesome teachers who are providing choice around assessment, and maybe it's portfolio-based and project-based, we've got some awesome stuff happening in some of our upper-level physics classes where that's a thing that's happening. So we want to grow and expand on those, but we're also very cognizant of the reality that that's not the majority of our classes. We have pockets where we can celebrate those things, so we want to build on those, grow those, and expand those, and not think, our teachers aren't doing those things now. We have pockets where that's happening, it's great, but our teachers are so amazing, they're doing that in spite of a system that wasn't built for that. So how do we help really give them the tools, resources, and unleash their creativity and unleash their ability so that they can really, really go at it for our mission and vision for our kids?
It's great that the district provides that opportunity and provides some support as well. What about project-based learning? To what extent does this relate?
Yeah, majorly, I would say. So we actually sent a group of our leaders last month to a project-based learning conference to learn more. We've got a group of teachers at, at Barrett's Elementary who've been really diving into project-based learning. It is a way, and I will not say the way, and be very clear about that, it's a way for students to have multiple authentic ways to demonstrate their understanding. So if it's based around projects, in projects, students have more choice. They have more choice over how they might present it, the mode by which they present their project. They might have different ways to explain their learning within that, it might be written, it might be presentation, there's all these different ways that they can do that, so that also leverages the idea of student choice. So we think that's a really potentially strong avenue where project-based learning on that component of personalized could be a really powerful and really important factor. We also know there's some other things we could do around, like, we could do portfolio-based, where it really is about presenting a, a broad swath of our evidence, so there's other ways, but I think project-based could certainly be a huge component of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to have anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. All right, we have no work session, we have no special meeting, so our next closed, next scheduled closed session is Wednesday, September 12th, 6:00 p.m. at Parkway Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within twenty-four hours of the anticipated meeting. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for your attendance.